Good morning. It's Wednesday, August 27, 2014, and we're in the Commissioners Board Room at Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street in Salem for a weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. And we start that meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have people here this morning. That's always encouraging. The first item is a presentation. It's the Oregon Accreditation Alliance Certificate to the Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Jason Myers and Ed Boyd of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance, good morning.
Good morning.
If you just pull that microphone real close, please.
Yes, sir. Good morning. My name is Ed Boyd, and I am privileged to be the Executive Director of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance and also a retired Chief of Police with the Albany Police Department. I also had the honor of serving with Salem Police Department for over nineteen years before I went to Albany. I want to thank Sheriff Myers for his invitation, and I am very pleased to be here to present the Marion County Sheriff's Office with their Certificate of Initial State Accreditation. Accreditation means in an agency, their operations, management, policies, and procedures meet the best practices the industry has to offer. The accreditation process in general is a progressive and contemporary way of helping law enforcement agencies evaluate and improve their overall performance and provides formal and professional recognition that an organization meets or exceeds best practice expectations of service and quality in the profession. In Oregon right now, right at thirty-two percent of all law enforcement agencies are currently involved in accreditation, and just a little over twenty percent of Oregon agencies are actually accredited. It also, in my opinion, takes courage for an organization to take on the rigorous accreditation process. Anytime the chief executive officer of an organization invites an outside third party into their department or office to review and inspect everything associated with their operations and render an opinion as to whether they meet a set of best practice standards for that profession, that by itself shows commitment, transparency, and dedication to excellence. Marion County Sheriff's Office joined the Oregon Accreditation Alliance in 2008. This is the agency's first award conferring accredited status. Although it takes an entire organization working together to make this happen, special recognition needs to go to accreditation manager Sergeant James Krieger for his outstanding work in preparing the agency for accreditation. It is now my distinct honor and pleasure to present Sheriff Jason Myers and the Marion County Sheriff's Office with their Award of Accreditation. Sheriff Myers, on behalf of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance Board, I'd like to present you with your Certificate of Initial State Accreditation. Hope I could say a few words. This has been a long time coming, as you heard. We started in 2008. The work really goes to this team that's seated behind me. They've done a phenomenal job, this committee that we put together to review, analyze, and make recommendations around all the policy changes so that they fit within the framework of accreditation. So if it's possible, I'd like to have these folks come up front and get a picture because they're really the ones that earned this honor. So my thanks to all of you for your great work.
While you're doing that, just one comment. So I never heard you say, Ed, that you thought Marion County, like we do, has the best Sheriff's Office in the state. I just missed that.
I guess I could say I'm very partial to the Marion County Sheriff's Office. I have a tremendous history with them from my time in Salem, and a lot of the people sitting well beside me and behind me, I know extremely well. So it's a pleasure and honor to work with them.
Great. Do you want to gather them up? Come on up. Right in front here, and we'll join in the picture. No, I think we'll stay here, and they can line up. Except Tim will cover us up anyway.
Can we stand up?
Yes. Hi. All right, our next item is public comment. No one has signed up to take advantage of that this morning, so we'll go right to the consent calendar. Not sure.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move to these consent calendars. Under Board of Commissioners, approve an order appointing Commissioner Carlson as the Commissioner liaison to the Marion County Solid Waste Management Advisory Council. Under Business Services Human Resources, approve recommendation to reclassify two programmer-analyst threes to IT project managers. Under District Attorney, approve amendment number four to the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for $54,655.59 for juvenile dependency proceedings. Under Finance, approve a quitclaim deed to convey real property located adjacent to 360 Columbia Street in Salem. Under Public Works, approve an order appointing Marty Hyon to the Marion County Parks Commission to a term ending August 31, 2018, and approve a quitclaim deed to convey a drainage easement in southeast Salem to the Oregon Department of Transportation.
I'll second. Aye, it's moved to second to approve consent calendar this morning. Any further discussion? I don't hear any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have four action items this morning. The first is under the Board of Commissioners. We consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Independence, Polk County, Yamhill County, and Marion County in support of regional community development block grant for micro enterprise assistance, the Merit Program, Executive Director Forrest Peck. Come on up. And if you two would pull that right close and go ahead and begin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm here this morning to seek your approval on a memorandum of understanding that would join together Polk County, Yamhill County, Marion County, and the City of Independence. The City of Independence is the lead applicant on a community development block grant, and this is a continuation of a project that we've done for several years in partnership with the City of Independence, Yamhill County, and Polk County. This is the first year that we've included Marion County in that project. Under the terms of the grant, most of the work has to be targeted to people who are low to moderate income to meet a national objective. It also stipulates that we provide general classroom training and some incidental technical assistance to the people that are in that program. So that's what we plan to do. We'll hold our classes in three locations, and that will be in Independence, McMinnville, and in Woodburn. In Woodburn, we have a monolingual Spanish program there. We're doing a lot of outreach to the Latino business community. So that's our interest in including Marion County this year in that regional project. It gives us the capacity to better serve the folks that we're already working with in Woodburn. So under the terms of this grant, the City of Independence would be the one who receives the grant. They would in turn contract with Merit, and we would be the technical assistance provider. And the City of Independence would do the reporting to the Infrastructure Finance Authority on the grant. Memorandum of Understanding is already circulated to the other two counties, so today I'm here to get Marion County's signature, hopefully, and then it will go back to the City of Independence.
All right, are there any questions or comments?
May I, Mr. Chair? Thank you. Forrest, thank you for being here today and presenting this to us, and I just know from my interaction with the Latino Business Alliance here in Salem that there's been several people who have been helped by your organization. I've heard about what you've done, and thank you for your good work, and hopefully we can formalize this, and it'll help even get more individuals some support. Thanks a lot for what you do.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the encouragement.
Forrest, is there anything from, excuse me, just real quick, anything from Marion County specifically that we need to do? It just talks about support, but what does that support look like? And it looks like one application we need to make. Could you just tell us what Marion County specifically needs to do?
What the expectation is?
Yes.
Generally, it's just to sign that memorandum of understanding. There is no activity that's expected of the county. So we'll come back and report what we've done this past year, but we're not looking to the county to do any kind of reporting. The memorandum of understanding would be included in the application package to the Infrastructure Finance Authority, and by doing that, then it allows us to include in that regional program people who reside in Marion County outside the city of Salem, which currently we're not able to do. So there's no expectation of the county other than that. I should mention that there is a public hearing process, and the public hearing was held yesterday in the City of Independence. So that was properly noticed, and so we're past that hurdle, and now we just got to get an application in before the end of September.
Okay, great. Commissioner?
I just wanted to add, first of all, thank you for coming. We had a discussion about this at a management update meeting, and had a lot of questions and had a pretty full discussion. I noted in that meeting that in 2001, when I was a legislator, I actually carried a bill on the House floor that added micro enterprise to the array of things that was done. I think at the time it was called the Economic Development Department. Now it's called Business, I don't remember what it's called.
Business Oregon.
Business Oregon, thank you. And micro enterprise is really a very important aspect of economic development that sometimes gets overlooked, that so many people that can't get jobs in large, you know, we just don't have a lot of large corporations in Marion County, but we do have a lot of talented people, and they're able to create their own businesses, sometimes in their homes. Sometimes there's just one person associated with the business, very small. I did ask at the time if you were working with Allison McKenzie up in the Saniam Canyon, and you said you were working with her closely, and she does a lot of work, I know, with people that want to put together a micro enterprise. So I think having more resource for people in Marion County to be able to have the support that they need to create their own businesses is wonderful. So thank you for bringing this forward, and I'll gladly support it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Carlson. I really appreciate the comments on micro enterprise, and I agree that in the scope of economic development, oftentimes, micro enterprise is overlooked. Yet, when we look at the SBA profile for Oregon from 2007 to 2010, it was the only category of firm sizes that actually increased the number of employees. So it does have significant economic impact. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval and designate the chair to sign a memorandum of understanding between the City of Independence, Polk County, Yamhill County, and Marion County in support of a regional community development block grant for micro enterprise assistance.
And I'll second the motion.
All right, it's moved to second to approve the memorandum and authorize the chair to sign. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Forrest.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Good luck to you. Next is, consider approval of a proclamation that designates September 2014 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Marion County. I don't know if somebody's here to make a presentation on it, so it has our name on it. It's obviously a proclamation we'd support. I'll just read the background then, unless...
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea.
It says, "Cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among children in our country today. Mr. Firestein will continue to coordinate activities, including our popular Courageous Kid Recognition Program and other hospital functions at Dornbecker's Children's Hospital in Portland, among other facilities." This proclamation will be shared with the children at Dornbecker Children's Hospital and their parents. And I think when we, if we approve it and read the proclamation, the whole subject will come out.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve this proclamation designating September 2014 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Marion County.
Second. Okay, it's moved to second to approve the proclamation. Further discussion? Call a question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And now, as we do, we'll read this proclamation. Commissioner Cameron, would you begin?
Sure. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on August 27, 2014. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age fifteen. This tragic disease is detected in more than fifteen thousand of our country's young people each and every year, and whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers, and...
Whereas founded over twenty years ago by Stephen Firestein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., and Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Dornbecker Children's Hospital in Portland, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families, and...
Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor Courageous Kid Recognition Award Ceremony and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now, therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims September 2014 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Marion County and encourages all Marion County residents to join in this observance. We're giving short subject, but I know it's a terrible thing. I've had several family and friends, and devastating, so if this helps, that's great. Anything else? All right. The next item, I guess this is why everybody's here. It's under Community Services. Consider approval of an order initiating the formation of an Extension Service District for Marion County. Tamara Getch and Derek Godwin, John Burt, come on up. We always want to hear from you.
Right, you can't sit down.
Carol, whoever, we're so glad to have you, and it looks like you've made great progress, and you'll be announcing that. Tamara, you want to begin, or Derek, whoever?
That's great. Thank you, Commissioners.
I'm not sure that one's going.
Hello?
Maybe.
Maybe. I'll just get in.
That's better.
All right. For the record, my name is Tamara Getch. I'm the Director of Community Services. And this morning, we're before you for board approval for the order of initiation of Marion County Extension, excuse me, of initiation of Marion County Extension and 4-H Service District. We're seeking two public hearing dates. The first hearing date to be thirty to fifty days following today's date, August 27, and the second to be twenty to fifty days following the second hearing. Both require public notice, so this is the first part of that process. And just to give just a hint of a background of how we got here today, this journey has started well over a year ago. Even before my time in this position, Marion County Extension has worked long and hard in looking at this process and how to provide sustainable funding for the important services in which it provides to Marion County residents. The proposal for the service district is to establish Marion County Extension and 4-H Service District for healthy farms, food, and families. And the roles that they play in our community are extremely important to families, communities, our economic development, and we've been having long conversations internally with the Commissioners as well as within the communities. And I'm going to let Derek and our citizen group talk about the individual efforts that has led to today, and then I'll be here on the side if you need any additional input.
I want to interrupt here. Gloria, do you want to say anything now or wait until they've gone ahead and presented more, or just explaining the process?
Well, we can go through the process. I think it might be useful to...
Sure.
I think it's good to hear a little bit of that. So basically, this is a statutory process to form a new county service district that will be governed by the Board of Commissioners. It will have its own separate tax base. There's a couple of ways to do it. One way is to gather signatures, which is what the citizens group has done over the summer, and another way is to initiate it by a board order. So it's been quite a while since the board has done one of these, and so there's just kind of a little bit of a reminder of the process. This is the first step in that, where the board would approve or consider approval of an order to initiate the proceeding. We'd set a public hearing, as Tamara mentioned, that would be thirty to fifty days out. And an important part about this for a county service district, and they'll talk about it more, I'm sure, is that in order to include territory that's within a city, you have to have a resolution from the city that authorizes them to be included in the proposed district. And that certainly is a challenge for Marion County because we have twenty incorporated cities. And we did provide you with the last two of those resolutions that are included in your packet, so all twenty of those are there. As a technicality, we'll go back and make sure that they're certified resolutions, but the basic intent is that the territory within the cities have consented by approval of their city councils. So we will be giving notice of the first public hearing. If it's approved by the board to go forward, we have a form of notice prepared for you, and that will be published in a paper of general circulation in the county, as well as posted. And then at the first public hearing, the board will consider certain criteria as to this special district, the local comprehensive planning for the area, the economic, demographic, sociological trends, and other land use goals within Marion County. So that's some of the things we'll get to at the first public hearing. There'll be a second public hearing, and at that public hearing, the board, because it does include a proposed tax base, would be proposing to send it to an election. So there are going to be at least two opportunities for public hearings on this matter. So this is the very first step. There's a lot of details. We don't need to go through it now, but I think it gives some context for when they describe the services and the intent of the purpose of this district.
Thank you, Gloria. Derek, you want to go ahead?
Sure. So Derek Godwin, I am an OSU Extension Service Regional Administrator for the Mid Valley. So as Tamara mentioned, a little bit of the background, we have advisory committees that advise us on how to address various needs within the county and how to seek funding and help improve services. And so this discussion of trying to improve our funding situation and the continued loss of services that Marion County has received over the last fourteen, fifteen or so years, this discussion has been going on for some time. But more recently, the advisory group formed a Citizens for Marion County Extension and started going through this process of taking the steps to form a service district. A little bit of background here on what has been happening, you know, the steps involved. So in January, the board signed a resolution in support of this effort. In February, the board supported our feasibility statement that included the budget, the proposed budget, for the service district in year one and year three, as well as the positions and the reasons behind this service district, you know, who would they serve and why is it needed. And then also, the board waived the deposit for filing the prospective petition at that time. So then after that, three chief petitioners were gained, one of which is sitting here, Kara Fisher, the other two, Jim Burnow and Bob Zelinski. So the citizens group had three chief petitioners, filed a prospective petition, and gained an approval to circulate a petition, and that approval was given in late June. So since that time, the volunteer groups have been gathering signatures at various events. Meanwhile, while that was going on, we visited all twenty cities in Marion County, starting first with the city of Salem. We put a lot of effort into visiting with them because without the city of Salem, that leaves a pretty big hole in the district. So city of Salem considered the resolutions in April and passed in May, and we were off and running to all the other cities. At every city, we would do a brief presentation, and either Pamela Rose or myself would be there, in addition to a Citizens for Marion County Extension person, and in some cases where we had a few meetings the same night, we had to split up. But in all cases, we passed the city resolutions in one or two meetings, and of the individual votes, there were only five no votes out of approximately about a hundred and twenty votes altogether. Also, we were doing marketing efforts, created palm cards, as well as delivering presentations, being on the radio, TV, and continuing our marketing efforts, sharing the information of the importance of extension services during that time. So I want to pass this on to Kara Fisher to talk about specifically the citizen efforts and some of the petition gathering and other parts of that group.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Kara Fisher, 265 Oakway, Salem, and I'm here today to represent the Citizens for Marion County Extension Leadership Team. Derek said a lot about what we have done since we organized, since we last talked to you in the spring. We have been very busy with development of the petition, development of outreach materials and displays. We trained volunteers to how to gather petitions, which is more complicated than just getting signatures. And we were actively involved in seeking the petitions from each of the cities. We also spent a great deal of our efforts on gathering and are still gathering signatures to move this towards the May 15 ballot. In that process, we were at several local events, from the Saniam Summer Fest to the Salem Art Fair. We were at St. Paul Rodeo, Homer and Davenport Days, and still have future events on our calendar where we will gather signatures. The signature gathering process has gained us many friends. It has truly helped us expand our base of information and knowledge on what we're proposing, and we have been met with enthusiasm by people we have encouraged to sign the petition. I think uniformly what we've all shared is to find out how many old 4-Hers are out there because we mentioned 4-H and youth development, and that's what truly has sparked people's interests, and looking at ways that we can improve service to youth has been a wonderful outreach tool in this process. The citizen group stands ready for the next steps necessary to move this towards the ballot. Once it's approved for ballot, we will be forming a political action committee, which will help us develop a fundraising plan so we can pay for campaign materials that are outside of what, well, technically, we can ask for a yes vote with private money. With that, we think that we can create a successful campaign as we move towards ballot consideration by the public. And I'm going to turn this over to John Burt now.
Thank you. My name is John Burt. I'm retired OSU Extension Service and member of the Citizens for Marion County Extension. I reside at Dallas in Polk County. And it's always a pleasure to be here as well, to see you. Thank you. I think you can see that efforts over the spring and summer have resulted in a response that's quite positive. Frankly, I don't know that I'm surprised... Frankly, I don't know that I'm surprised, but I'm quite pleased that all 20 cities have signed on. That is a huge, huge effort, and to see that accomplished really speaks volumes. Also, the efforts, the citizens have stepped forward, come out, volunteers, petition gathering, that's grinding work, and we're seeing that response as well. So, I think we're seeing that the response is positive out in the community. We've come a long way. So, I'm here, I just, in summary, to say thank you to you all for keeping this moving forward, to have the vision to see a future for Marion County that includes this resource of OSU Extension Service that cuts across all the boundaries, not just agriculture, but youth programs, homeowners, and certainly provides a link to the research base at OSU, which can turn into an economic driver in the community. So, it's a very positive, positive thing. So, at this point, here we are, it's this step that you'll take will, I think, benefit this effort in a great way in that it will preserve some of the energy of the volunteers and the resources, not to mention funds, that can be directed solely, presuming this goes through, solely to the efforts of the election. And I think that's an important, important step for the success of this effort. So, on behalf of the Citizens for Marion County Extension, at this point, we'd like to formally request, I guess, that you consider an order of initiation to start the process to refer this to the voters. And thank you again.
All right, thank you. Questions? Mr. Carlson.
Well, thank you all for being here and for all the work. And yes, getting those 20 city resolutions was no small feat. I've got to participate in a couple of the meetings, I guess a few, more than a couple for city of Salem, with individual city councilors, and then also going out to Jervis with Derek. And I think it was really instructive to be able to hear the opinions of the different city officials about, and to be able to explain to them the services that OSU Extension has provided in not only their communities but across the county. I wanted to ask, and I'm not sure who the best person is to ask, but so, just so that people who have been following this may not be confused, we actually initiated the process last spring for you formally as a board to do the signature gathering process. And John, you're familiar with what's gone on, I know, in Polk County and some other counties. Can you, can somebody explain how the law determines how many signatures you have to gather? And then, and then I know that you thought you were going to have to gather, you had, like, you had a target in mind, and then that target went up significantly, and if you could tell people about that. And then compare that, maybe, John, with the number of signatures that have been, or Derek, if you know those numbers, in the other communities around us, the counties around us that have passed those extension levies.
Thanks, Commissioner. I started with my experience in Polk County. We gathered petitions and signatures over there, but the total for the county was about 8,000 signatures. I'll just use that as an opening.
All right, great, thank you.
So, I'm going to look at Gloria here, and so she can correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it, the law requires for these Agriculture Education Service Districts to have 15% of the registered voters. You have to collect that number in valid signatures.
Is it, I'm sorry, is it registered right now or registered in the last gubernatorial election? Do you know, Gloria?
Well, so that was where there's kind of confusion.
All right, okay.
We thought originally it was 15% of the people that voted in the last gubernatorial election, and it turned out to be 15% of the registered voters on the day that you filed the petition.
Oh, okay, so that's different.
So, right. So, our initial estimates were in around the 15,000 range, and that jumped up to 20, just under 23,000. And that's just the valid signatures. So, you need to collect, usually they say about 20 to 30% more than that because of the invalid signatures. So, anyway, so that gives you the numbers. As far as the other counties, so as a reminder, now 22 counties have passed service districts. Most of them by far are through the referral process, but some of them have collected signatures. Polk County was one, as John mentioned. Also, Lynn County, they collected around 11,000 or so was their amount. Clackamas, that we've also kind of compared to, they didn't go the signature route, they were referred. The last one in Jackson County, they had started the signature gathering process, and then the commissioners referred them. That was the last one that passed recently.
So, thank you. So, I think, a couple of things. One is, I appreciate Kara, you talking about the value that the effort has had by gathering the signatures up to this point. And through those festivals and summer months, there's great opportunity. We're entering into, doesn't feel like it today, but shortly though, it'll be the rainy season, it'll start getting dark early, and it's going to be more and more difficult to gather signatures as you have been, number one. And number two is, it is, as John and Derek, as you pointed out, a great deal, many more signatures than other counties that passed successfully gathered. And if you were to try to continue the signature route, I believe you would probably have to hire people to do it. There's just no way on a volunteer effort that you could get that level of signatures. And so then the question becomes, do you raise money to pay people to gather the signatures and then raise more money to try to educate voters on what it will do? Or do we, as a board, put it on the ballot for you, and then you can invest your time in raising the funds to get the message out? And I think, at least my opinion, and I think the rest of the board today will state theirs, is that we're probably at a point now as we end the summer months that we ought to be really focusing on getting the education out to the community. And so, hence the reason why we're kind of switching gears on the process. I also wanted to add that, as I've been speaking with people about this, I mean, several points. One is that I have been impressed over the years as being a county commissioner and working with John and Derek, and as you took on that leadership role, about how much the farmers, the agricultural community really relies on OSU Extension for technical expertise, support, the research station, just such an impressive place. We were able, a few years ago, when the National Association of Counties held their annual conference in Portland, Oregon, we organized a field trip for people from all over the nation to come and observe agriculture in Marion, Polk, and Yamhill counties and rich agricultural lands. Lots going on, and we did stop at the research station and, you know, types of blueberries and how they grow and how, you know, I mean, it's just, I'm not the expert in it, you can tell, but just a lot of information. So, to think about what would happen if there was a loss of that, and then to, Derek, I know you've gone through this story before here, so many positions have been lost, and the more that we lose, the more it becomes regional or even one person for half the state, and that support is much, much less. The other areas where I think the community has, is impressed with OSU Extension is their youth development programs. And 4H is the one that stands out. Kara, you mentioned a lot of old 4Hers out there. We put on the Marion County Fair every year. We see those kids come in and the work that they do and the skills that they learn and the values and the qualities that those types of programs add to their character and how important that is in, for families and for our communities here in Marion County. And then the last element is the master gardeners. We have, I was at the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council last night. They have master recyclers, but also there, I know a lot of people are involved with the master gardening program, and it's also a very important part of our community. I know you could go on and name all the, you have lists of things that OSU Extension does, but I think sometimes people have to think a couple of times, you know, it's kind of the best kept secret, but that's why it's so important, I think, for us to now be at a point where you can go out and inform the community about what it is that is already being offered, what can be provided through this service district, and how important it is to our county. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to just recognize, I think it was just this week in the Statesman Journal, Marion County, number one in agricultural volume, and this is, you know, really an asset for, our asset that we have here. And thank you for what you're doing. And I want to recognize, in the audience, one of our mayors, Paul Thomas, is here, and I think you're a master gardener, right? Mayor Thomas? Yeah? And thank you. I want to thank those city councilors that aren't here, but I think we, Derek, you said we had three in opposition?
Five total.
Five total in opposition in all 20 cities, five total city councilors. So, that shows the understanding of our local city leaders that understand how important agriculture is to this whole area. So, thank you for the work you've done, and I want to thank those that aren't in here that have supported the council, council votes in these resolutions.
Just a couple of comments, kind of random, it's already been covered, but I might just start with what my perception's been the 10 years I've been a commissioner, is about an annual cut in one form or another of extension service. I might interject right here, the county's not done that. In fact, we've expanded ours, but state, federal monies have been cut. There was a time I felt we were subsidizing other counties, and that didn't please me very much, when you're told, well, you'll share a person now, but everything will be the same. It's not. So, this will answer a lot of those questions, and what goes through my mind, and you're going to have to come up with a statement, it's five cents per thousand, but what will that five cents per thousand really mean to extension service and the things that it can provide? Just kind of off the top of your head, Derek, it's mean, but just tell people what it really means.
Well, I'll tell you in short, this amount of funding at five cents per thousand would easily double what we have now, and that becomes an investment. And the investment, you know, we've coined the phrase farms, food, and families, well, it would increase, we would provide several positions for agriculture. You know, we've mentioned time and time again, number one in the state is our county, and that's, that's where we've lost the most people serving Marion County. So, we have several positions that are focused just in farming, both the large farms as well as some of the smaller farms that are trying to direct market, you know, through the farmer's market, through their community-supported agriculture, through various methods. And the second area is 4H. 4H has been cut considerably in the county. We still have a fairly large program compared to other counties, but this would easily double the amount of people being served in 4H, and I think more realistically, triple the number of youth that are receiving services in the county. Furthermore, with that, it's very challenging to get throughout the county, so we tend to easier, to better serve the larger city and the places where our office is stationed. So, this will allow us to make, to serve the communities in the canyon better and North Marion County, East Marion County, throughout the county. And then in the third area, I mentioned the food, and that is our community food system. It provides a position, both helping with the farms, trying to direct market, as well as on the food, nutrition, family, community health side, helping us have a healthy food system. So, that's more than two sentences.
You did good.
That's it. It would be a huge, a huge help for us. And I would also furthermore say is that these are funds that are dedicated specifically for Marion County. So, there's some fear out there when we first talk about it, though, well, is this money going to OSU that may support some other area? And no, this is, this is right here, and that's a huge, a huge effort. A huge help.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And maybe, this is a question, Marion County specifically, but what happened at the state fairgrounds with the horses and the 4H youth being sent home? Hopefully, we can get somebody, being on the state fair council now, and maybe, Derek, you can help direct some resources that would help us improve those facilities over there for the youth. I mean, what a disappointment that happened over there. So, I think maybe it's, we can coordinate.
Well, no, if John was here, he'd have shoveled it out and brought in new, and it'd be done. That's what I'll tell you.
I'd have my pick out.
Huh?
But there are tremendous people with the skills, knowledge, and the resources that are involved with the horse program. It's the biggest horse program in the state, and I'm sure we...
Could you repeat that, John, from the microphone?
Yeah, I missed that one.
Thank you.
It was riveting, but you missed it.
Old retired people, we forget.
Yeah, the microphone. Yeah, the 4H Horse Program in Marion County, the Extension 4H Horse Program, is the largest one in the state, and there are lots of people with the resources, knowledge of what it takes. There's other resources in the community that can help do that, and with a little bit of lead time, I think we could, you being in that position can direct those resources to the appropriate people at the state fair to get that taken care of. There's, you can, you can correct that. And we've got the connection to the resources to do that. You bet.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, the last thing I want to say, I think I like to be mean, I'm sorry, but I noticed the three people, Kara Fisher here in front of us, and Bob Zelinski and Jim Burnow, really took a leap of faith, and they're kind of on the hook if this doesn't come through for the expenses and different issues of that. They're relieved if they get a property, a proper vote or a positive vote this morning. But to me, it also shows the willingness, the seriousness of it, that they would take that risk, and certainly, I appreciate that a whole bunch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing that risk.
Of course, I don't know how I'm going to vote yet, but go.
Keep her hanging here.
And it is significant. My, my two fellow chief petitioners and I all agree that this is worth the personal financial risk to us to go make this effort happen. And for everyone who may not be knowledgeable on this process, if we move the petition to the ballot through petition, and the ballot issue fails, when the voters consider it, the three chief petitioners are financially responsible for the cost of the election. That's a significant chunk of change. And, but we are so committed to making this happen and are truly pleased and thrilled to see the support that this issue has achieved in 22 other counties. So, we think the roadmap is pretty clear for us on how to put together a successful campaign to make it happen.
Well, thank you for taking the risk for the rest of us. Commissioner, you want to?
Mr. Chair, we get to move the approval of an order initiating the formation of an extension service district for Marion County and do...
Let's set the hearing date and the motion.
And setting the first public hearing date.
For October 1st.
For October 1st, 2014, 9:30 a.m.
And I will second that motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded to approve the order initiating the formation of the Extension Service District for Marion County and setting the date for the first hearing, October 1st, 2014, at 9:30. Anything further? Okay, and call a question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. Congratulations, and I know there's still a lot of work ahead, but certainly on the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys trying to make her a little more nervous with that?
Suspense.
All right.
Just trying to make Kara go crazy, huh?
Our last item this morning is, back to the sheriff, we consider approval of the closeout certification of the Second Chance Act Prisoner Reentry Initiative Grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. It's a bunch. Commander Jeff Wood, you'd go ahead when you're ready.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for a moment of your time. For the record, my name is Jeff Wood. I'm the Pro and Probation Division Commander with the Marion County Sheriff's Office, and as recited, this is, I'm here to request the board's approval to, for the closeout certification of the Second Chance Act Prisoner Reentry Grant, which started in 2009. In order to see where we are right now, both with the Second Chance Act and the Marion County Reentry Initiative, MCRi, I think it's, it might be fruitful for a moment of the board's time to see where we have been, to go down memory lane, so to speak. Back in 2009, the local recidivism rate in Marion County for the Department of Corrections offenders was 33% in our local controlled population. Those offenders who served a year or less in our local county jail was approaching 40%. Although reentry was sort of a statewide phenomenon and nothing new, I would say it probably was in its infancy. Locally in Marion County, we had a sole source contract with a private nonprofit entity. Basically, all reentry services were provided by one private nonprofit for reentry in Marion County. At the time in 2009, around March, as a brand-new commander who had absolutely no grant experience and immediately felt he was over his head, Commissioner Carlson showed a little pity on us and convened a group to work on the solicitation for the Second Chance Act grant. Initially, we requested an award of $302,000, which was supposed to provide support for Quest for Change, a 13-bed transitional house, project management, and cognitive materials for motivation and cognitive programming among... for motivation and cognitive programming, among others. The funding at the time, although Quest for Change wasn't as, one was in existence, it was funded through a COPS meth grant that was due to run out. The target population for MCRi in the Second Chance Act has been and has continued to be high and medium-risk male offenders who are returning to Marion County from a period in incarceration. These are the people who pose the greatest threat to commit new criminal activity in Marion County, and we targeted those services for this population. When we received, after submitting the award in April of 2009 and receiving notice in August of 2009, as chance would have it, our sole source nonprofit was experiencing some financial difficulties and decided to focus on their core functions and get out of the reentry services altogether. Although I would say, and I think Commissioner Carlson can verify this, this was a very stressful time during this period of 2009. It actually served as a catalyst for what MCRi and the Second Chance Act became and is currently today. We've moved from a sole source contract, a sole source program, to a collaborative model that I think represents Marion County very well as a whole. And I'd say with this new model, this collaborative model, not only did the Second Chance Act and MCRi survive, but it thrived. And from that initial award of $302,000 received from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, we've received continuation funding in 2011 and 2012. In 2011, we received continuation funding of $400,000, and in 2012, we received continuation funding of $800,000. Not only did it fund Quest for Change and Community Action Transitional Services, but it also formed funding for the Marion County, for the Reentry Resource Center, now named the Demunis Resource Center. It provided employment services for our Shemecata-located Student Opportunity for Achieving Results Drug and Alcohol Employment and Education Program located on the Shemecata Community College campus. It provided facilitators from Bridgeway Recovery Services for the SOAR program, as well as Community Corrections Educator Position utilized by the sheriff to provide parenting classes for people who are returning from incarceration, as well as additional treatment services for non-SOAR participants. One thing I would say, all in all, from 2009 to present, this funding accumulated in $1.5 million of funding for MCRi. I would say this funding provided services during a period, if you all remember, during a very severe recession in Marion County where locally we were making substantial cuts. These services allowed us to provide, or this funding allowed us to provide these services through a very deep recession, and with that $1.5 million worth of funding, we were also able to provide $2.1 million in match funding. The collaborative model from a sole source contract initially includes partners like Community Action Agency, Mid Valley Mentors, the Union Gospel Mission, Bridgeway Recovery Services, Shemecata Community College, and of course, the Department of Corrections. Through the Second Chance Act funding, we have been poked, prodded, evaluated several times, including an evaluation from NPC Research, Crime and Justice Institute, ICF International, and the Social Policy Research through the National Institute of Justice. Although not funded by the Second Chance Act, we also had our Student Opportunity for Achieving Results SOAR program evaluated by the Department of Corrections, and it received, although it sounds a little mediocre, a very satisfactory rating, which actually is the highest rating a treatment program can receive. One thing I'd really like to point out, and I think what bodes well for Marion County is the leadership and community support for both the Marion County Reentry Initiative and the Second Chance Act grant. Through the leadership of the Board of Commissioners, Sheriff Myers, letters of support from our congressional delegation, including Senator Wyden, Senator Merkley and Congressman Schrader, there has been a very broad support for arguably a very difficult concept. When you say, I like to term Dick Withnell's term in terms of, this is a very mature ask. It's not easy to sell people returning from incarceration after they've inflicted harm into the citizens of Marion County. It's a difficult ask, yet through Commissioner Carlson's leadership, we've sponsored five breakfasts between each breakfast, had between 200 and 300 people at each breakfast, and if my math is right, we solicited over close to $40,000 of donations for client services in Marion County. If you had told me that 15 years ago, as I started off as a parole and probation officer in Marion County, would I believe this? I would say absolutely not. But as you look at it today, the community support is absolutely amazing. So you're probably asking, what is the end result? Have we been successful and what have we done? I would argue, yes, we have. Over the last five years, we have provided services for almost 1,700 offenders who are returning to Marion County. We have done, conducted prison reach-ins for over 1,100. One thing I would point out is prior to reach-ins, the no-show rate, the amount of people who did not report in post-release from the Department of Corrections or our local county jail, was amazingly at about a third of the total population wouldn't show up. Through these reach-ins, through these contacts, through this collaborative effort with our, the sheriff's office and our private nonprofit partners, this no-show rate had dropped to less than 4%. Last I checked, it's about 2%, which saves costs, which saves money, which saves times and actually facilitates the reformative process. We've been able to provide housing for over 201 participants, be it Quest for Change, Restoration House, or the Union Gospel Mission or other subsidy housing, and we've been able to provide employment services to 597 participants of those 204 obtained employment. And I would say this data is a little skewed because we started tracking it in 2011, two years after our initial grant. And through the Second Chance Act funding, we've been able to provide cognitive or drug and alcohol treatment to over 385 participants. The one thing I'll close with is, and admittedly it's an oversimplification, but I'll close with recidivism. And for the record, I'm using the definition of this recidivism being a new felony conviction within three years of release from prison or a local county jail. As I mentioned, as we approached 2009, we had a 2008 cohort with a recidivism rate of 33% for Department of Corrections and 40% for local control. Since that, our latest cohort in 2014, our DOC recidivism rate has dropped to 14% and our local control has dropped to 35%. Although it is certainly not zero, which is our ultimate goal for this population, I will say with the decline in recidivism, you're talking about people who are not committing new crimes, who are engaging in treatment, who are taking parenting classes, who are getting jobs, who are obtaining employment, paying taxes. And through this, I would say Marion County has benefited tremendously in public safety through this funding, through these programs and through the Second Chance Act. Although I would say it's been a rather interesting five years, it's been an honor to be associated with this grant. I'm very proud of the product that we've produced over this period of time, and that is the sum total of my testimony, and I'd be welcome of any questions.
I know you're anxious to go.
I have, no, no, what, I don't know, do you want to go first?
I don't have too much. I was afraid you wasn't going to say that, you started with 3 cents of his numbers, but it, and I thought maybe I just missed it, but it was less than half, but I don't know what more you could ask for. Zero's great, but I just wanted to make sure you brought that out and you ended with it.
I've got a lot to say, so if you want to go first.
Go ahead. Commissioner, you go ahead because you might cover it all.
Well, I don't want to steal your thunder, so.
Well, I will. The only thing, thank you, Jeff. Commander, I'm sorry.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for your hard work, your team. I know Troy was there before you and just all the, the hard work that goes in, even the phone calls you took last Friday and dealing with those situations is, is critical, your leadership, and I know you've got lots of people out there that are making this happen. As somebody who's sat on the governor's reentry council since 2007, the things that I've really seen from the state level, the things that are really making a difference are happening and being driven here in Marion County. And I'm honored to be a part of the commission now, and I'm going to give credit to Commissioner Carlson and her leadership to really even come over to the Capitol and say, you know, we need to get these things done. I remember sitting on the governor's reentry council the first time I was there, and they were talking about obstacles to these people being successful and, you know, an ID card. And I said, well, what's so hard about getting people ID cards? Well, I think it took us two years to start getting DMV and DOC to working together, but now people are coming out with social security cards and ID and things like that, but it's just amazing the type of work that has been done. And when I look at 33 to 14%, what we didn't put there was the actual numbers and what that really, the return, and that's what, I'd like to someday figure that out, what the, keeping that many people from going back and committing a new crime and going back to DOC or wherever, there's really, literally a dollar return on investment.
Absolutely.
And you can never put the amount on somebody's life and changing their life. So thank you for your great work.
Thank you.
So I'm not even sure where to start, but I've got so many notes down here, and I thought I'd just say I had one and then two. Let me first say that I appreciate this opportunity to close out this grant. This has been, I think this has been what a federal grant should be. A federal grant should be something that launches or jumpstarts, something that's really good and really important, but it doesn't become the thing that is required to sustain it. And we, every year, Jeff and Alicia, a few of us get together and we run the numbers and try to figure out how we're going to make it through the next year. And over time, we have been able to, initially, we were almost all federal money and a little bit of state money, and then we, we've been able to shift it and with the help of the legislature and justice reinvestment, some other good things that are going on, Measure 57 that came in and so on, we've been able to sustain what we started and perhaps build some things. Barb has been putting together a table, and I, what is the number? Do you remember the total number off the top of your head? I can't remember it. It's a lot of money, right, over the last several years? Is it 6 million, I guess, or something? She'll get it, yeah, she'll get it for us, but anyway. So you look and you see 320,000 and then, you know, a few other hundred thousand, but the amount of money that's been put into this from all sources has been significant, but it launched or it started with this Second Chance Act grant. We did put, when Jeff was walking down memory lane, we did put this grant group together to help, and if I recall, there was a grant that went into Criminal Justice Commission, I'm looking at Troy, and it kind of got put together quickly and we weren't successful. And so we said, well, how can we do better? And we got Alicia's talents, and she started doing Visio and flow charts and, but the one thing that I do remember out of it, as we were pulling together the design, was that the requirement of the Second Chance Act grant was that you committed to reducing recidivism by 50% over five years. And so I was part of the grant writing team and I was doing some writing, and I wrote that in the narrative that we pulled out at a particular meeting, and Jeff turned white and said, what? How can we commit to that? And I said, well, we have to commit to it because the grant requires that we commit to it. And then I said, it's a three-year grant, so who's going to know after three years whether we get down to 50% or not? Let's just put it in there. But it's amazing to me that we have reduced recidivism as significantly as we have. And if you take 2009 as the starting point, it's 33%, but Jeff, if you go back to like 2005, 2006, you're actually getting up even-
Close to 40%.
Right, close to 40%. So the amount that it's gone down is tremendous over just the last decade. The breakfast that we have pulled together to get community support, I noticed in the narrative that it talks about that there were 320 participants in the first year and we got roughly $6,000 in the community, and it says more than 200 in the second year. So anyone that might be reviewing this or looking at this, was Barb giving us a number? $8 million? Okay, that's a lot of money. We moved, the first year we had it at a venue out by Market Street that held 400 people and we had about 320 there. The second year, we moved downtown to the Broadway Commons, and they only hold about 200 people. So it wasn't like people were less interested the second year, we've been at capacity, but Dick Withnell helped us with the Broadway Commons and they provide that venue for us. That's their sponsorship or contribution to the breakfast, so it's a kind of a deal that we have a hard time beating. And every year, people actually email me before the invitation goes out to say, put me on the list, where's the breakfast? I really want to get in. So I mean, we have a devoted group of people that come every year and new people that come every year as well. I wanted to talk for a minute too about the, the structure of the team that works on reentry. When that first grant went out to Criminal Justice Commission, and even the first grant that we wrote for the Second Chance Act, there was a partnership between the Marion County Sheriff's Office and St. Vincent de Paul. And sometimes I describe it probably more flippantly than I should, as the sheriff's office saying, here, we'll give you $40,000 and would you just solve the reentry problem for us? You know, we're going to kind of hand this off to you. And the, we got two grants, no, we wrote two grants, the mentoring grant and for Second Chance Act and the prisoner reentry grant. And within about two weeks of each other, we got notice from the federal government that we got both grants. And in the same time period, St. Vincent de Paul gave us notice that they were no longer going to be able to manage the grants. Hence the stressfulness of the first year that Jeff was talking about. But I think that what we were able to do was to find the greatest strengths of the organizations in our community, and it became stronger and it became better because of that. I think at the time, I mean, we, we were, there was a little panic, there was a lot of trying to figure out what's Plan A, what's Plan B, what's Plan C? But we did what I called diversify, and I remember when I called Jeff and he said, you had me at diversify, as I was explaining to him, the concept about, well, rather than finding one organization that would say, we will take all of this on, let's look for organizations that have a core mission in housing or a core mission in mentoring or a core mission in job development and bring them in as a team, and the sheriff's office becomes the hub of that and takes on a greater role in terms of managing those reentry services. And I think because of that strategic work that we did in that first year, we have had more partners come to the table, some partners have had to leave, it hasn't then caused the whole thing to implode when one partner goes away, and it gives us a stability as a group that I think we wouldn't have had with the original model. Way back in 1998, I first became acquainted with just the whole prison and jail kind of issues when I was hired by Marion County Corrections Department, it was a separate department at the time, to do a project called Corrections Family Support. And Rick McKenna was the director at the time, and he had done a survey in the jail, and he asked me to go out and do some focus groups, and so I went out and talked with people. Two groups of men in the jail, one group of women, then in the work center, I had one more group, so I interviewed four groups, and I asked them questions about, it was, since it was about family support, about how many children they had, where their children were, how they had been parented as they grew up, the kind of parenting skills that they were using, the challenges that they found, what programs they were involved with. Had some compelling conversations with people. One particular group, I recall, when I asked them how they were parented, one young man said, well, I was beaten with a belt every week, and then another young man said, well, you think that's bad? I was thrown through a plate glass window, and people started to cry and more people were telling stories. I mean, it was, and I'm just like, kind of wow. Also asking them about their connections with alcohol and drugs, lots of that, how would they handle it with their own children? Stories like, well, I smoked my first joint with my dad, you know, that was kind of a bonding experience, I don't know if my son decided that he was going to smoke marijuana, whether I could not be a hypocrite, and maybe I would smoke, he would smoke his first joint with me, I mean, you know, and others that would say, well, I'm in jail and drugs and alcohol got me here, I would absolutely tell my children not to. But it was pretty much half and half in terms of how that went. And then the asking, how many children you have? Lots of children. I have five children, one's in Woodburn with their mom, another one's living, an adult living in Seattle, I've got a baby with my girlfriend, my other girlfriend has our two toddlers, I mean, so, and that was pretty normal to hear lots of children in lots of different places. So we're working on the breakfast now for October 29th, and I spent an entire afternoon out at the Wolverine Parole and Probation Office interviewing probably close to 20, 25 people that are involved with parole and probation. And I expected to hear similar things. I wanted to kind of recreate the focus groups that I did in 1998, but all of these people that I had, there was one thing that didn't make them sort of the random sample that you would want. They've all been involved with parole and probation, they've been through the SOAR program, they're going through the programming that we have. And while they still had a lot of kids and they were in a lot of different places, I didn't hear one of them say, oh, it would be okay for my child to be involved with drugs and alcohol. I didn't hear one of them say that- I didn't hear one of them say that they didn't want to turn their life around and, and talk about the good things they were doing. The positive types of comments that I got out of every single one of those people about what their future looked like and where they saw themselves in it, it was just, I mean, it was night and day between what I heard when I went out in 1998 and did those same types of interviews. It was just very impressive to me. And so I just wanted to close with a couple of things. One is that I think people ask, well, what makes what we do here in Marion County different than perhaps what you'd have elsewhere? And I don't know that we're all that different because this is a national movement, and there's a lot of people doing a lot of good things in Oregon and across the nation. But I think the fact that we do have the business community involved with us, that helps us to reach out to employers and to say, would you be willing to hire somebody in your business that has a criminal background? Because we are giving them all this support, and this is the kind of person that they're becoming. The faith community has come in, just tremendous support from them, and Salem Leadership Foundation, Sam Skilern, has been a staunch advocate for this movement, has helped us to inform the pastors around the Salem area community and elsewhere. We have such wonderful nonprofits that work with us, in a design team that Jan Calvin coordinates. And we've added, now that we have this new grant with Link Up, and we've got co-occurring disorders, we've got Bridgway with Tim Murphy, we've had Shemecata Community College and Community Action, and Mid Valley Mentors, and others that have been at the table with us, job growers. I know I'm leaving people out, but I feel like the Oscar's here, but anyway. And I want to call out a few, I think the Marion County Sheriff's Office has lent tremendous support, appreciate the sheriff and the undersheriff. I know that they are extremely committed to this. They not only lend their leadership in terms of authorizing it, but they participate, they come to the meetings and are actively engaged. The reentry council, which Kevin has served on in his past role, not just the Governor's Council, but our local reentry council, that we created because of this grant, has had a great deal of influence. The parole and probation staff, with Jeff in leadership roles, and Matt Meyer, who's had his handy dandy spreadsheet to figure out all of the numbers, and is always so positive in, in working through issues, challenges that we have when we're trying to gather data or implement protocols. Alicia Weathers, who is sitting out here, who is a tremendous grant writer, a visio expert, and, and does budgets. You don't find very many people that do budgets as well as Alicia. And Chris Wilson, who is also here, who has been our voice of reason and caution to say, you cannot, Janet, put that kind of money towards this position because it's match, and if you do that, you will never be able to use it as match again. So I'm, I'm really glad that she's there, that she's watching, and, and that she has the level of expertise that she does. I mentioned Jan Calvin, who works really hard for us. Jackie Wenders and Kevin Cameron at the legislature have been just tremendous supports. And Kevin mentioned the ID bill, but when I came to him, I asked him to do, I think it was 10 bills that we did that one session. And I think we got four or five of them passed, which is pretty awesome to think that we were able to do that. And the, and the ID bill, it wasn't because of the bill that happened, but it was because you were tenacious after the bill was passed that was a little milquetoasty in how they wrote it, to say, you need to follow through, no matter what it says, you need to follow through, and, and pulled it off in terms of getting those ID cards for people. Paul Dimunis, who's, the Resource Centers, is named after him, and he's been former chief justice of the Oregon Supreme Court. And Larry Takarsky actually helped, when we had a gap in our grants, actually funded our services during the gap so that we wouldn't have to lay people off and that we could continue them. And then Dick Withnell has been mentioned, Anna Peterson, and then, of course, the Board of Commissioners, that we need to be supportive of you, too. And now that we have Kevin on the board, I think all three of us have a strong commitment to this effort and, and are excited to see what happens as we move forward in the future. So I know I've gone on a while, but, oh, and I just wanted to give a segue to Kevin, that we will, in addition to having this, the sixth annual breakfast on the 29th of October, will be before SEDCOR. Now, do you want to talk about that, Kevin, about the business ask that, that you've been working on?
Well, we're, we're on the, this is a result of the Governor's Reentry Council and the subgroup on the workforce, getting people employed. And so Jeff will be there with us, and we're going to present, it's pretty, that shows you how far we've come, when we're actually going to be before the, well, what do you call it? The Strategic Economic Development Corporation, and we're going to be presenting reentry to them. And it's great. Well, it's October 8th, I think, right?
Right. We'll have Dick There Withnell as the closer to, to ask these business people to step forward. We'll have Deb Giard, who's our, I call her our job developer, I know she has another title, but she works.
Employment coordinator, yes.
Yeah, she works with businesses in Marion County to try to get people hired, and has put together a very nice presentation, and we'll have, and Jeff, you'll be involved in giving the statistics. And I think I get to just say a few words at the beginning to introduce it, and Kevin's going to say a few words, and hopefully we'll get a few people to say this is something that we want to be engaged with.
Looking forward to it.
Yep. So thank you all for all your work, and I hope I didn't, and our congressional delegation here, I was going to start out with that, Fritz and Katie, thank you for being here, and also thank you to the, our two senators, and also Kurt Schrader, for writing all those letters of support and being there as we've come and talked to you, and, and I've gone back to DC and talked to folks that, they know, I mean, Oregon's on the map, I think, at the federal level, and I think Marion County out of Oregon has, has got a big star on the map because of the work that's been done here. So thank you for being here today and for helping us launch that, that first grant and the others.
Mr. Chair, the last thing I'd say is I made a note to, to clip Jeff's commander's presentation and send it back to Washington DC as a testimonial in front of some committee.
Put it with it.
Because you've got all the stats right there, it was great, so.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thought of a couple more comments. And one's probably the most significant, and I've told this story before, but at a breakfast three years ago, a person I knew was a youngster, has been having trouble since, and he came up and specifically wanted me to know that this person and this program saved his life. And I can't think how much more significant that would be. You caught to thank the senators for their, and I hope you'll take back the success of the program and our gratitude for making it work. And then the last, thanked everybody but you, but Kevin mentioned, but you certainly have led the charge, and, and it has been a wonderful, successful program, and I appreciate that very much. Anything else?
I think it's.
I think you get to do it, Commissioner Carlson. I think I do. So, Chair, I would move that we approve the closeout certification. This seems so underwhelming, this is what we're approving, but after all, we've talked about, but this is what we're doing. Approving the closeout certification for the Second Chance Act Prisoner Reentry Initiative Grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance.
And I'll second that fantastic motion.
All right. Movement's seconded to approve the closeout certification of the Second Act, Second Chance Act Prisoner Reentry Initiative Grant. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Again, thank you all for all your involvement.
Thank you.
That is the last item. We have no public hearing this morning, so the only thing left to do is to read the places we'll be together in the coming week. And this is one of the rather shortest lists I've seen, but.
Labor Day weekend, so.
That'll be fine. We'll close out the summer. We start with, I don't, I don't think we're going to be together, but it wants us to know that Monday is a holiday, Labor Day. Tuesday, we have a work session at 11 o'clock on, from the Health Department, Tobacco-Free Smoke-Free Property Ordinance, Southern Conference Room, fifth floor, 555 Court Street in Salem. Next Wednesday is our next board session here in the Senator Hearing Room, and then that's followed Wednesday, the 3rd of September, at noon to 1:00, with the Marion County and Woodburn meeting and location to be announced. Anything we missed this morning, or opportunity to bring something up? Nope. Well, then, let's call this meeting adjourned.